It's Monday, February 5th, 2024, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council, roll call.
Here.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Into the public religious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Item four, public forum. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed in the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name, and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I see no public. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. I doubt it. Consent agenda. Roll call.
Yes.
Justin Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Yes.
Non-consent agenda. Six A, discuss FY '25 city budget, including CIP and ERP.
Good evening, council. Tonight is really our kickoff meeting for fiscal year 2025 budget. So looking for some, potentially some preliminary feedback from you, but mostly want to introduce you to what staff's been working on and answer any questions you might have in preparation for the work session at our following city council meeting. Feel free to interrupt us as we kind of walk through this. There'll be a variety of us kind of talking to through various aspects. But our plan tonight is to start out with the ERP, so our equipment revolving plan. I think our goal as a staff here is to get you aware over the course of the budget process on this year's fiscal year expenses for equipment to the point where we'd be able to address any questions and that you'd feel comfortable with us moving through our procurement policy on those and then placing most of those equipment purchases on the consent agenda going forward. Of course, you always have the ability to pull those off if there's questions that arise, but we'd like to try to get most of the questions that you might have answered through the budget process on this year's coming expenses. And then we'll also like to talk through some of the larger or different or new expenses that we've got listed throughout the coming years. So ERP section is Appendix B. That is immediately before the pullout pages in your budget binder. And we're just going to walk through each departments in the order that they're listed there. So I think Pete, you are up to bat. Yeah, if you would come up, please. We're on the ERP. It's right before the pullout pages there, which is the CIP.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you is our fiscal police ERP budget for the foreseeable future, including some of your past. As you noticed, basically, we have a schedule that basically just replaces one vehicle a year. We do have nine total in our fleet. Four are marked. One is an unmarked police car that uses, Chad Norris uses in rest or administrative and detectives. We've had some other issues in there. We had some. We do have two listed in the 2526 budget for we could have a patrol vehicle and an embed people need to cut, maybe rotated out that are planned with 2526.
Hold on, I am, for some reason.
You're just about there.
All right. Okay, thank you.
And then realistically, we went through and we kind of took some things out from the previous ERP that we didn't need anymore. We just were able to, you know, get it through something else or within our budget. Just some of the big ticket items on here in the near future are, we talked about the security and the safety cameras and the access control. That system at some point will have to be upgraded and replaced. It's old. It's an older system. I don't have any estimates. I know we just started the process of getting some proposals and some vendors to come out and let us know what they can do for us. As I know, as we also do some work out, the CEC and Public Works, they'll also have to be included in that. And that is, we put that in there under ours?
It's actually in the IT section.
Okay, so it's an IT section, but we, we estimate that's going to be kind of the hefty, hefty project. And realistically, the only other two issues or bigger ticket items on here is the replacement of the generator that sits out back here. I don't know how that old that is. I can't get a price yet. We've asked Ziegler for a price and see about replacing that, but I have not got that. I know Fire Chief has two. We just put that in there as a placeholder. If it continues to work, we may not need to replace it, but we do need to make some upgrades to that to have the battery charged differently. Because as we found out over the summer when we had all those power outages, it was not keeping up and was not working correctly. And then other than that, it was the, in 2829 is our in-car and body camera system will also need to be, our shelf life for that system is is kind of coming to a close, but we've been kind of working with our vendor to keep that up and running for at least a couple more years. But that's another ticket item that's, that's just listed in there and we can, you know, if it works, we can also kick that, that can down the road a little bit too, if, if they continue to work well. But sometimes those systems, the shelf life gets shut down. They don't support them. And so we have, we have to think of something else from our, our current system, sorry.
Chief, what's the expected shelf life normally?
A camera itself in about five years. It's the software that we're having problems with because it's kind of outdated. We also have a lot of requests for, for public information and we can't redact. And we also can't blur out faces. We have to send that to other parties to do that. The newer camera systems, there are two or three of them out there right now that can actually transcribe a conversation for you that from, from the video itself also has, comes with software that also has, can do the redaction for us and blur out some words and even background stuff, kids, pictures in the background. The problem is that we just, we're just in the process of purchasing a, purchasing a server for our camera system where we just did. I can't remember where we're at on that, but we, we want to keep that for at least five years since we're going to do that. The next system, we want to have a cloud-based system so we don't worry about having to maintain that on site, so.
Is this something that there's ever grants or so that would be something that we would look at as well?
It's just really just the place where we put that in there. This is where we work.
Which just helps to have it in the ERP's event and budget for it down the road.
Pete, explain the, explain the car to me again, why there's two cars this year?
Cars in 2526, we had, we have one car that's still, still quite old. The mileage is getting up there. We also really want to be a green fleet, you know, so we want to have a hybrid option to replace that other aging squad car. And again, if it works, it's a placeholder. They had, I just kind of worked with what the former chief's had on the replacement cycle. Then if the car is still working, we did it, but the idling hours or restriction of the idling hours on the squads too, if that prolonged some of those cars and keeps the miles down, we don't have to replace it at that time. It's just, it was just there and I could, I just kept it there. So the patrol cars are the ones that get used the most. They're the ones that are exposed to the extreme cold and extreme hot. And, you know, those officers are in those cars, you know, all the time. So we do like to keep those as, as new, not new, but as, as, well, as new as possible for their comfort, I guess, to any questions at all?
So we're just looking for, Adam, your earlier comment, this marked patrol vehicle, patrol vehicle for this year, is that purchased yet for this year? Or is that already been done?
That was the one we did.
That was the one.
I think we, I hate to say it out loud, but we may have actually come on a budget.
Don't hate to say that.
Myself every time I said it.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that one is, we're done. So, okay, perfect.
And so next year would just be the one unmarked. We have a very old Corus that's sitting in the garage back here that could go, and we, and this number does now also reflect that we can get trade-ins and we do get, you know, we do get some offset of that too. That's just the maximum amount that we would be looking for. So it doesn't always have to be that.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Jim, I think you're up next. I also just comment, you know, kudos to all three of our department heads on this. I think everybody's been working on getting an online tracking system for their equipment to be able to make sure that we're scheduling oil changes, doing other regular maintenance on there. I know Andy did a lot of work getting a spreadsheet together. I think some of the other departments are using as well. So if there's any other questions, I guess, on maintenance going forward, we're happy to share those documents with you, but I just didn't want to go through all that level of detail this night, this evening.
James Vies, Fire Chief Windsor Heights, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the time tonight. Our ERP, been a little work on it. We omitted some items that I found irrelevant and we just weren't spending money historically. Autumn, one of those was fire hose. So if you look at our past ones, I've eliminated it every other year to kind of counteract that. If we start out at fiscal year 2425, turnout year is the only thing that we've got projected that we need to get. 2526, our current ambulance is up for replacement. That is by design. We pushed that off a year. And we've had the new engine installed and I thought that we could get another year out of it. So that is in for 2526. Keep in mind that ambulances right now are about two years out. So if we ordered one today, we're looking a year and a half, two years to get that. 2627, we have the paramedic SUV unit. That's currently what I am driving as a command vehicle. And again, we have turnout year. So that's going to be a rotating issue. We ultimately want to get to the goal of our full-time staff having two sets. To get that, I want to start applying for grants and see if we can get at that avenue and not add it to our ERP. I think we'll probably be able to be successful with that. 2728, this is the big one that we need to discuss. It's a project I've been working on over the last couple of months with Fire Chiefs from Clive and Urbendale. Adam, would you mind pulling up that real quick? So keep in mind, these are embryonic talks. We're very early stages. Currently, what Clive and Urbendale are doing are a shared resource project. And essentially what that is, is they are going to have certain apparatuses in a combined fleet. So both agencies have access to it. The ultimate goal for this, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. It's a long-term sustainable solution that we have been invited to participate in or at least talk about. The concept is all, all departments that are participating in this bring something to the table. When we initially started talking about this, I was looking at more of like a buy-in option for the city of Windsor Heights. And both Fire Chiefs are pretty adamant. They want us to bring something tangible to the table in the form of an apparatus. We would have access essentially. There's not a lot of details as, as we're early on in the talks with it. Urbendale would supply an extra ambulance, potentially a truck and potentially an engine. Clyde would have potentially an ambulance, potentially an engine, and what they would expect out of the city of Windsor Heights would be a reserve ambulance. What makes it tricky for us obviously is our budget and the community size that we have, but they want a mission-ready ambulance. So they want something newer. So we couldn't just get our new replacement ambulance in a year or two and then push that other one into reserve. They want something that is basically new and is like their apparatus. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So essentially what we would have in-house, what we currently have are two engines. We have our primary and our backup engine. And we have one ambulance. Under this model, we would have one engine. We wouldn't have to worry about replacing another engine down the road, which right now, I think our last check we wrote was $705,000. We'd have ambulance 553, which is currently what we run out of, and the shared resource ambulance. Essentially, what would that be? We'd house it. If our ambulance broke down, we'd have access to the ambulances, obviously, here. If Urbendale had an ambulance breakdown, they would come and get a reserve. If our engine broke down, I'd call Clive or Urbendale and I'd pull one of their reserves to our station. Another key component into this is the maintenance fleet program. They're proposing that we would fall under the same mechanics that would probably be housed out of Urbendale in these potential talks. Right now, our Pierce engine that we've currently bought fits into the model that they have. They're all going to Pierce's, Clive and Urbendale. So we fit into that very well. Pros to this, we have virtually no out-of-service times because we're making a phone call and we're getting one of the reserve for our fleet. We'd be involved in the fleet maintenance program. Keep in mind, there's going to be costs associated with that that we currently don't have now. No, no change in the current mutual aid delivery. One thing that has been expressed to me that makes me feel really strongly about this is that Clive and Urbendale are going to do this without us or with us. It doesn't really matter to them. But what that does mean is that they're going to limit mutual aid responses potentially in the future. What that means is we could possibly call them for mutual aid if their primary apparatus are on the call. They're not going to give us a backup squad. So that leaves us calling Western Wayne. If Western Wayne's not available, maybe Johnston. I don't know. It limits who we can get mutual aid from. Des Moines historically has not come here and I don't ever see that changing. They're not going to come to mutual aid for an ambulance, so. Another pros, we eliminate the reserve engine. So long-term, we're talking about a long time from now, we're not buying another $705,000 apparatus. Oh, this is small potatoes, but it does buy us space in the bay, which we're pretty confined now. That gives us an opportunity to train in or, as me and Chief Roth have done, they're starting to park apparatus inside to keep idling hours down. So that could potentially open up a bay for that in the evenings. Cons, shared resource ambulance purchase. We've got it worked in fiscal year '27, a down payment of $85,000. And then fiscal year '28 paying off the balance. I did scour the internet for potential ambulance prices. They're actually all over the board. I wanted to give a, a price that I thought that we would be very comfortable with being able to get under that. So I did talk to Chief Garcia at Clive and he's thinking that ambulance is going to be around $400,000. I'm hoping that we can get under that, but being a part of this, we want like apparatus. So it's going to have to be a combined effort that if we did something like this, Clive, Urbendale, and Windsor Heights would be operating similar apparatus. So what that means is if they go with a Braun ambulance, that's what we're going to go with. We're already with Pierce, so we're good there for, well, past my tenure here, that, that engine's going to be here for 20 years. I will not. The fleet maintenance program.
Where are you going? Jim, where are you going?
The fleet maintenance program, those are very early talks. I don't know what the cost is to that yet. Like I said, these are beginning talks that we've, we've had. I, it is going to be more than what we're putting into apparatus now because we have a mechanic we go to. They come and they take care of what we need. But the consistency to that would be very good. And for our overall fleet maintenance program, they would handle virtually everything other than our crews doing daily checks and making sure everything's ready to go. What that means is all the annual maintenance gets taken care of when it's supposed to. They check tires. They do everything. And again, I, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that non-participation could result in revised mutual aid. But when I say could be, it's going to be. I don't know what that looks like yet, but I do know that it's going to limit our ability to have mutual aid from those other communities because they're going to have stakeholders with each community and they got to take care of their own, so. I know I'm throwing a lot at you.
Yes, thank you for broaching this very uncomplicated subject during this.
So you said it could be two year, a year and a half, two years to get a ambulance. And so if we order one in 2526 and we get it a year and a half later, that very gently used ambulance couldn't be the mutual aid chair asset?
Actually, one of the things I wanted to talk to him about was, we continue to run out of our older squad for a couple of years. Since it does have a new engine, it deserves a potential that they could be like, yeah, that, that would be fine. I would think that with our frontline apparatus, if we're operating out of the older one and we have that one accessible, that might be something that could potentially happen.
Oh, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just thinking if we're buying one in 2526 and then like looking, you know, another one in 2829, can we just, can we use the 2829 as our primary and the 2526 one be the?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You're talking.
Be the shared asset. Right.
Yes, so I think that would probably be up to us on which one was reserved. As long as it met the parameters on, I'm guessing they're going to go by mileage. Now, one thing that makes us dynamic compared to the other departments is, everybody knows that Urbendale and Clive are much busier than we are. So if they're replacing a squad every three to five years, we cannot, and I understand this, we can't replace at the same time.
Yeah.
Because right now, our squad has 70,000 miles on it. It's a 2012. It's super low mileage. So there'd be different parameters for us and, and the equipment, so.
The other, I'm very supportive of this. And the other thing I really like about it is what percentage of our calls are ambulance response as opposed to engine?
90% EMS, 10% fire.
And with that ratio, I guess to me, it makes sense to have a backup ambulance for those situations in-house as opposed to the engine for the 10%, particularly when you've got mutual aid.
Yep. And with our staffing, if we're out on a call, the engine's not going anywhere anyway. Even if we do get a fire call, we're not here. So much like the 63rd fire, they were coming back from a fire call when it came out and it's the way it is. That's why we have mutual aid and strong mutual aid agreements.
What, how much revenue are we bringing in right now on? Aren't our ambulance?
Rochelle, would you have any idea on that? The only thing I know for sure is what we bring in on GMP, that's 140,000 a year-ish.
Yeah, so we're up to about, currently at half-year market, 204,000. So we're going to be up to close to 100,000 this year.
So annually, I mean, I think that's one way to look at this too. I mean, you think about it from the perspective of the, we know that the revenue, not that, you know, having two is going to increase, you know, double your income, but we already know that it's paying for itself. And that's based when the unit itself, obviously not the staffing. I, I understand there's multiple components, but so somebody asked me about this and I hadn't heard anything, of course. And so I appreciate the update today. And, and I really have been very much of the mindset that we do need to start thinking about resource sharing, more collaborative types of efforts. So I'm glad to see this.
Yeah, and one thing I love about this is that we're very collaborative with people that we already are with. And we have 100% autonomy. This is still the Windsor Heights Fire Department. We make all the decisions. We protect our community. So it's kind of a mesh. I know in my past, I've heard mergers and this and that. And the one thing I do know is Windsor Heights will not lose their fire department. But this allows us to have updated apparatus, be part of a bigger thing and then have that autonomy, that autonomy that we desperately want. And we're going to keep so.
So what is the question tonight then, Adam or Jim? What is?
I think, you know, generally we're looking for, are you supportive of the idea of participating in the apparatus sharing? And if so, we'll proceed with those conversations and planning for two ambulances at some point. This is what we've outlined, but we'll get more answers, I think, over the course of conversation in the next six months.
And I truly wish I had more information for you, but like I said, these are early talks, but they need to be discussed. So.
I'm, I'm interested in it and I think it has a lot of potential. I really do not love the, the, this is an option, but if you don't go along with it, we're going to change the rules of the game that we're already playing. Vibe of that mutual aid will change if we don't participate. So yeah, we have the option, but also it seems a little bit like they're forcing our hand. And that doesn't feel great in the embryonic, as you said, stages of a relationship.
I can assure you there was no malice or anything like that, but they have to be dedicated to agreements that they're putting together and this collaborative effort that they're doing. It, it in no way says that they're going to take away mutual aid from us. They don't want to do that, but they will have obligations to each other that they need to fulfill. So I, I, I don't ever see a time coming where we call for help and somebody doesn't come. It's just going to be a longer wait. And obviously, my job as Fire Chief is to provide excellent service to the community of Windsor Heights. And I want to try to do everything I can to make sure that that happens.
So we're looking at, so then when, when will we put the order in for the next ambulance?
The second newer ambulance? That would be a deposit going in, in fiscal year '27, '28, and final payment upon delivery generally. And estimated '28, '29, and that'll depends on our turnaround time's going to slow down. Are they going to speed up? Are they going to hold true? So, in a broad answer.
But don't we have one in '25, '26? Would you have one in that? Is that, was that your question? Like that? Yes. So we have, so if you've, you've got one and you said it's a two-year wait right now, so have we put the order in for that yet?
Not yet. That's why I'm going to have these talks and make sure what we wanted to do. And one reason that I did hold off and I didn't fill the pressing was the fact that we had the new engine put in the squad and we had some time because I want to run that thing and get, get, basically get the goodie out of it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So I, that's with all of that information. Just curious then, when are we, are we still thinking that it's going to fall in the?
Let's say in two months I ordered it. And honestly, what I'd like to do is order it in fiscal year '25. And then that's probably going to be a year and a half to two years, but we got that.
Okay, so we're going to be in fiscal year '25, starting in July. So, okay, all right, fair enough. That helps. That's mental. Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I'm, I'm supportive of this. And I know that we've talked previously about this type of project. And I, I think it, there's a lot of benefits. There might be a few drawbacks and it might be a little bit costlier, but I think in the long run, this is something that could help us proceed into bigger and better things too as well, you know, with shared resources across the, the metro.
Yeah, and I did look into this when the, the first initial kind of idea happened. And I couldn't find anywhere in the United States that communities are coming together and attempting something like this. And I honestly think that this could be a trend that gets set for communities down the road on being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money, you know, because let's face it, a, a fire truck doesn't go out a lot. You know, and a lot of departments replace them every 10 years. And if we can extend that even by two years, if you look at the cost, the overall cost of an engine and its lifecycle, we got 20 years out of ours. You're talking, we pay $35,000 a year to have that fire truck sitting there. Anything we can do to defray off of that is great. So.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, I'm Jason Roberts, Public Court Director for the city. As you can see, if we got up here in '24, '25, we went ahead and purchased dump truck number five, which we decided we'd pass this past year. We still have the money in there because it's backlog. So we're locked into the price for 194,154. So that will not go up any. We don't have to pay any money until it arrives here at O'Halloran's. And that does include the dump box and everything within that price and the blade. We'd like to replace also our John Deere riding lawnmower 1445, which is now 17 years old. Has 2,300 miles on it, which is approximately 136 hours a year that we put on that. We already, already have a, have more John Deere, which is a 1575 with attachments, which involves two push blades, a big blower that goes on the front of it. And both, with both of these, everything will be interchangeable. So if we get a new lawnmower, if we need to use it for backup or anything, or need to have another thing, we can go ahead and put it on there. We do have an extra cab that can go up around it. Approximately trade-in for that lawnmower would be roughly $2,000, which is not a lot of value now because it's 17 years old. It's rough shape. We've had good maintenance records on it as the last year and a half, obviously. So we do take good care of and maintaining it.
Is it going to be Bill's retirement gift?
That would be great, yeah. It's funny that you actually said that. Bill actually said that he would like to buy an hour on purpose. The city would like to donate that to Mr. Cruz. It would be great. And he's also donating $2,000 to the city. We'll put that out there. We'll put that out there. Um.
With an orange flag.
Um, the new lawnmower would uh, approximately be about thirty-eight thousand dollars and that's without that trade-in. Um, the other thing is, is obviously, you know, the city's gotten better about getting on, doing govdeals.com, you know, so we can get the the max amount of money out of things. So that's also another option that we can do uh, there. And that is um, Vanwall here in, in urban. The other big ask um, would be a tarring machine, a crack sealing machine for the city. Um, and I've got with Logan, I'm about a couple of things and crack sealing is actually a great thing and it's um, gonna really help our streets to hold up the preservation on it if we can get active on it. Um, just like this year, we've uh, put in that we wanted to uh, university corridor that was overlaid here about two years ago. We're starting to see some real small dense cracks in there. And if we get on those now, it's gonna be a lot better. It's gonna help pre- preserve that uh, overlay and get into those.
Cracks turn into potholes, don't they?
Big time, yeah. Um, and obviously, we all know, you know, we got a lot of potholes in town. You know, we do the best that we can.
You guys were out, you guys were out working hard the other day on Seventy-third.
Right, um, yes, and we want that street done more than ever. But um, with the crack ceiling, you know, if you drive like down s- uh, School Street, the last time that any major crack ceiling was done was in twenty-twenty-one. Um, you know, the other thing that we also have to worry about is, is if we don't purchase a machine, we're at the beg of mercy of trying to rent a machine from like Star Equipment or somebody else, and that puts us on a longer list. And you know, we really have to schedule, you know, the perfect timing for it. You know, you can't help if somebody's sick, you may be short a guy on the crew, as where if we've got this machine, we can have it for ever and ever and ever. And you know, we can do it twice a year and not have to worry about it. Andy and I have already been out, took a drive last week and we've already got a map out of, you know, what streets need to be cracked sealed. We've already kind of got zones picked out where we wanna start that and everything like that. So you're looking at about sixty thousand dollars for a brand-new uh, crack sealer. Uh, he also gave me a quote on um, one that was used, which is a two thousand twenty-two. And then I had two hundred and thirty hours, it's about fifty-five thousand dollars. So five thousand more dollars, basically, you can have a a newer machine.
Can I touch on?
Sure can, Andy.
Uh, my name, Andy Larson, uh, Public Works Secretary, head of supervisory. Um, so the one thing that currently is being done now is as we've rent the machine uh, basically in the spring and the fall. The limitations with that is obviously availability, which Jason touched on. Um, also the weather, if it's wet, uh, the purpose of crack sealing is to keep water from intruding into the pavement. And therefore, you're running creating potholes. So filling potholes, cutting out and replacing street panels is a reactive approach to pavement preservation. Crack sealing would be more on the proactive side of preventing the problem before it arises. So um, this tarring machine would be something that would be kinda pavement preservation one-on-one. Um, necessary for practical application of keeping things intact. The pavement intact and making use of the tax dollars that went into that road. Um, you'd seen that return on that investment versus letting it go and then having a road that's back to where it was before it was overlaid. So I just I'd like to give it a preventative maintenance program and try and be proactive versus always being reactive.
How much does it cost to rent one of these?
Thousand dollars a day.
And then you rent them for a week? Is that?
Yeah, you're only, you're a week's time, then you know, you've gotta get your uh, you gotta purchase your tar, you know, to go in the back of the kettle. Um, also gotta have a compressor uh, that you have to rent. So you know, you're looking at probably another seven hundred dollars of rental fee for a week for a compressor, which we, we don't have anything budgeted for a compressor. I would rather rent a compressor for the time being. I would rather get the machine here and actually have this big purchase machine here so we're ready to go.
Is this a trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
Behind it.
Right.
And basically what it is, is it's a big kettle that's got a, a pump and a wand on it that heats the tar up to a liquid state. And then, you know, the water is supplied uh, in the cracks to.
Yeah. Do you know how many gallons the, the machine that you're looking at might be?
Yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at, we'll, I don't know. They've got all thirty-three, thirty-four gallons. Back capacity is a hundred and thirty-three gallons. Yep, yeah. And melting capacity is, is ninety gallons an hour.
I just found one for thirty-six thousand.
That'll be one.
I think, I think it would be in one, yeah. Asphalt seal coating direct, asphalt seal coating direct.
Um, kinda moving on in twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, we'd like.
I'm sorry, real quick question. What's the um, what's, how long do those generally last? What's the, that's the longevity of those machines?
You know, tarring machine, I mean, you, you're probably looking a good ten, fifteen years.
Okay.
You know, just curious. I mean, yeah.
And generally, you guys are renting twice a year, a week at a time?
Yep.
Is that?
And, and right now, it's kind of whatever gets done and that time it's done and whatever.
Okay.
Else.
Then it's just.
Other wayside.
Okay.
If we had the machine in house, um.
Makes sense.
Like it, again, you know, weather dependent. If it rains a week before, if it's, there's rain in the forecast, obviously, then that messes with the rental schedule and try to get it from outside source. So it'd allow us to be able to do more miles on the roads and at our discretion versus being bound by constraints from the outside.
Sounds like a good investment.
Thank you, Andy. Um, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, half-ton uh, pickup truck, um, which is Brian's truck, which is the Parkton Rex truck. Um, it was actually slated to be due a few years, uh, at least two, if not three years ago, but with the purchase of the Kubota for the, for Parkton Rex, which has been a good investment to have for the parts, you know, when we have events and different things going up and down the trail, clearing the trail. Um, it's, it's got some uh, starting to get some age on it. It's got a roughly seventy-six thousand miles on it. Um, starting to rust around the quarter panel. So, you know, um, you're looking about fifty-five thousand roughly. Another thing that we can also look, you know, everybody, we wanna go green in the city. So you know, there's also an option that we can get some numbers and put some numbers together for a vehicle that would be more efficient, you know, for the economy. Um, obviously, I would also like to purchase our second dump truck, um, snowplow truck um, in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, you know, we've talked, obviously, this past year, we, we had a discussion about it. I think that it's a good idea that we go ahead and try to purchase this truck knowing that there is a weight on um, these dump trucks. Um, you know, a good year to two years out. We know that the cost is probably gonna go up with inflation, so obviously, it's not gonna get any cheaper. Um, we also.
Jason, when are we gonna get the one, when are we gonna get the first one we ordered?
It should be here in twenty-twenty-five. We're, we're, fingers crossed, it's gonna be here in twenty-twenty-five.
Well, it's twenty-twenty-four. It's February.
Fiscal year or like regular people year, fiscal year? Or people year?
It's February of twenty-twenty-four.
I thought we moved at the speed of government, but apparently manufacturers.
You, you know, I mean, we're kind of at the mercy of, you know.
So I, I understand.
Unfortunately.
All right.
Um, I, oh, there is, so Hawkeye, so the, the chassis of the vehicle is purchased through the uh, friends. Um, when we go to Hawkeye Truck, we put in Hawkeye Truck, we put in capacity for the box, spread it all over the paddles that the truck would be outfitted. So it's, all that is waiting there at Hawkeye, but when the truck shows up, it's just a matter of when the truck comes in, you know, get outfitted, right, you know, over the Hawkeye and then, so we're at the mercy of everybody else in the supply chain. Just, thank everybody.
Um, I'd like to, I know there's been some discussion about it. Uh, this is the last time we had Public Works uh, committee meeting. I would really like to make sure that we actually have three snowplow trucks capping the town. Now, I understand that that becomes a maintenance issue and it's a little more cost um, to our fleet, but I really think that if we have a third dump truck, it's gonna allow us to get on the side roads a lot quicker. And we're gonna be able to make a lot more passes down through the side streets. Those one tons take a beating trying to keep up with the, with the side streets. Like, now, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna snow every time like it did this last time, it's beginning of January. But if we have one of those bigger trucks, we can get onto the side streets right away and we can have the other two trucks out on the main drags on University Seventy-third, Seventieth, keeping those roads maintained while it's snowing. Um, you know, Bill and I do our best, what we can with the uh, with the one-ton trucks on the side streets, but you know, having that third truck, it's gonna allow us to get on there a lot quicker, would be able to throw down salt if it's not like a major, major storm. We're already applying the material down. Um, forty-six, forty-seven. Um, it's kind of throwing it out there, you know, both uh, truck number two and three are the half-ton um, pickup trucks. Be honest with you, you're probably looking at they've got roughly thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand miles. Those trucks can probably, to be honest with you, can last another five years. Um, as long as they're maintained. I mean, it's not like, you know, we're pushing up and down the road. We're driving all over, you know, like uh, Waki, West Des Moines, Des Moines, we're not driving all over with those pickup trucks. Um, any, any questions?
Two and three, you said respectively about thirty-five, thirty-seven, but number one, you said has about what?
Yeah, it has about seventy-some odd thousand.
Okay.
And that is a two thousand six truck.
Yes.
And I thought even the oldest piece of equipment that we have, that we start.
So another thing to go off of, the other thing with Jason was talking about keeping the other dump truck instead of trading it in. We have a whole nineteen-nineties Chevy Sucker, a GMC trailer, seven Chevy Cheyenne, Cheyenne uh, dump box truck that uh, has been retired out of the ERP, but we still have it in our fleet just as an old work truck that falls rock, dirt, gravel. It's got a dump bed on there. At some point, that truck's gonna give way. Uh, we call it the chief, but um, when that truck moves, it'd be nice to have another truck that isn't used uh, for salt applications to put asphalt, concrete, dirty gravel, rock, stuff like that in, in the trucks that we use for our winter seasons. Uh, so we kind of use that truck, the, the third plow truck, um, in most, most regards of being able to haul materials around, I mean, as well.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Trevor.
One-ton truck Chevy number eight.
Next, I'm gonna try to cover the systems and technology section. Uh, I'll be honest, when Derek left, uh, and then also Rob has left, uh, we've lost a lot of expertise in this department. Um, so there's several of us trying to fill that gap. A huge thanks to Pete and to Lieutenant Earl Beck for all the work that they continue to do to try to get us up to speed. Uh, on our IT, we do lean heavily on our contractor, Arian, uh, as well, uh, to serve us as a professional managed IT service. Uh, but we're still trying to figure out exactly how to fill this gap in IT knowledge going forward. Uh, right now, we are consulting with Derek Meyer as well as Arian to replace uh, our server rack downstairs. We looked at several options, including going off-site, but co-locating with a local company or moving to the cloud. Both of those options were significantly more expensive than upgrading our servers and consolidating the number of servers uh, in the basement, which is pretty secure. We do have backup options for. And so, uh, what we're moving forward with right now is a purchase of, uh, I believe it's two new, two new Dell servers, um, and those will come in front of council here in the near future to get uh, our licenses up to grade, uh, up to date. Uh, and then we'd also need Arian to do a time and material contract to install those and get things running. So that would uh, supplant the need for a number of the um, server purchases that we had scheduled in the previous ERP out through twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, so those will all be removed. Uh, and then the next server upgrade uh, would be the server N E S one there in twenty-nine, thirty. Uh, and then additional servers, once we come off of the five or seven-year warranty of the two new ones that we'd be purchasing, starting in twenty-thirty, thirty-one. Uh, so there are some pretty substantial revisions here in the IT uh, option, but the price uh, is dropping just in part due to our ability to consolidate the servers uh, and to replace those here uh, this fiscal year. Beyond that, uh, we do have scheduled uh, regularly workstation replacements. Typically, we're looking at three to four workstations to be replaced a year. Uh, the city hall staff right now is working through the process of going away from having both a laptop and a desktop, just into a laptop with a docking station. Uh, so we can reduce the number of workstations that we have as well as the uh, managed IT contract that we have for Arian to support each of those. Uh, so that transitionally happening this year, along with the new public works uh, computer. Beyond that, uh, Chief uh, talked about a software camera upgrade. Uh, the public safety uh, cameras are very dated, uh, pretty low quality. We have some software connectivity between all of our cameras that need some upgrading. C E C has several cameras that no longer function and the pavilions uh, cameras that uh, has some software to connect it over to our C E C is no longer functioning as well. So we're gonna talk to several potential providers to upgrade uh, some software and some of the cameras, uh, try to get everything up and running again here.
What is the uh, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight council and city hall A V, what would that consist of?
So the system that's in here is not that old. I believe it's maybe four to five years old right now. Um, but we have had some issues with it. Uh, I think post-COVID, we've also seen that hybrid meetings have become a lot more common. Uh, so that is, and I don't think this has actually changed from the previous ERP years, but that would be an upgrade of this system. So the cameras, uh, microphone system, A V system here, as well as the conference room in city hall, uh, which doesn't have any telecommunication uh, options, conference options in it right there. So we'd probably put a directionless microphone in the ceiling in the city hall one. I don't know that we could get away with the size of this room on a directionless mic here, uh, but that is something that we could look at at that time as well, so we wouldn't be dealing with turning these off and on, trying to move them around. Kind of just allows everybody to talk at a room volume uh, and microphone to capture it there.
Thank you.
There's no additional questions on the IT. I'll start off with the C E C and then pass it over to uh, Andy or Nate to talk about the chairs. Um, the uh, the most significant proposal we have here in the C E C is the potential solar panel system um, for the south side of the C E C roof. If you go to the very end of your packet, you'll see a proposal from one source, Solar, who I've worked with. Uh, they did the solar system, solar panel system on the Johnston City Hall. Uh, they're out of Ankeny. Uh, just to kind of go through the numbers, I asked them to price out a system on the C E C that would uh, cover all or most of the power needs for that building, uh, the mayor's request. Oh, thank you. Uh, so the system that they've specked out for us is a ninety-two thousand kilowatt-hour system, uh, to cover the south roof of the C E C. Have an offset, uh, just over eighty percent uh, of the power needs for the building. The, the timing to put a solar system, uh, solar panel system on the building is pretty good right now. There are some federal tax credits um, that we're able to utilize uh, in the short term. Uh, and then there's also uh, some pending tariffs that would be coming online in the near future. So a lot of the acquisitions that local or U S installers have made uh, are at the pre-tariff level. Uh, and those tariffs will start hitting uh, new purchases here in the next six to nine months when they fully go in effect. Um, on the very, very last page there, on the back part, I've done an analysis of, of what I think the, the net present value and the return on that system would be, just to give you an idea. On the back part, I've done an analysis of, of what I think the uh, the net present value and the return on that system would be, uh, just to give you an idea. Uh, panels are warranted for thirty years uh, by the manufacturer. Typically, the installer will warranty the installation for five. Uh, and then you've got inverters uh, that serve each of these panels. Those typically have a seven year warranty on it. Uh, with about a ten year life expectancy, ten to fifteen year life expectancy. Uh, and beyond that, the actual mounting itself uh, doesn't have a really maintenance needs on it, so. We have a steel roof on the C E C building, uh, the best time or the best buildings to put a solar panel system on are ones that have a very uh, long. Durable lifespan for the roof. Um, and the uh, the one challenge we would face on the C E C building. Uh, is that there is no good place to put the inverters because it's a single-phase building, uh, the type of inverter that they make is a little bit larger. Uh, than a three-phase building, uh, so what we'd probably have to look at is what they have is micro inverters, so instead of one inverter serving. Uh, about half of the system, uh, you have a tiny inverter that sits underneath the panel and it serves two panels apiece, uh, so. It's not as ideal because you've got a lot more failure points, um, but. The alternative would be to ground to mount it next to our dumpsters or to mount it on the side of the building, which would be very unattractive. Uh, so I'd be a little bit, I'm not exactly sure what those micro inverters uh, look like, but I, I think that's really. The only weakness on the C E C.
Uh, let's say half of the, half of the roof of the. Um, C E C is shaded, those micros, micro inverters would allow other panels. To be able to collect versus it all like. Going into, it would allow each panel to be able to collect individually or on a smaller level versus the whole grid tight together.
Yeah, thanks, Andy.
I mean, there's a downside to where you have more inverters that could potentially fail and you have more components to the system and also.
So in that analysis, we've just looked at uh, our current cost uh, per kilowatt hour uh, with Mid-American. Uh, you typically lose about one percent or a half a percent of production each year on a solar panel. Um, put a discount rate in there, um, just to account for potentially borrowing money to pay for it, although we would be pulling that from the ERP. Uh, and then there are some insurance costs, uh, as well as then inverter replacements that you would have throughout the lifespan, which I've estimated about thirty years. Uh, for that panel system, so. Uh, that's one decision point for council to think about going forward. Uh, got an initial analysis here just for feedback or thought, uh, but we can talk more about that. At the upcoming work session, uh, if that's a project you potentially like to move forward with.
The work payment then is nineteen years, is that in?
Yes.
Full disclosure, I use them to, they put our, they put ours on our roof.
They would have to, they would have to go out to bed, right?
Yeah, at the end of the day, we'd have to go out to bed, uh, get three prices uh, for it, but uh, I think they'd be competitive and this is probably a good. Uh, initial impression for us to think about for a price. Nate or Andy, you wanna talk about uh, chairs and, and tables a little bit?
For me, I would kind of collaborate a little bit on, on tables and chairs over at the community center. The records that we had found, um, tell us that those tables and chairs are original to the building itself. Um, as most of you know, probably, uh, you can see the wear there that started to show on those, uh, that equipment. So. The chairs themselves difficult or don't, don't have a whole lot of distress to them. I know. Public Works, we had just gone through, rented a, an upholstery cleaner, uh, cleaned off the fabric on those chairs, so those are still in pretty good shape. But some of the tables have seen better days. Um, what we, I kind of talked about was. Consolidating what good tables are left, um, some of the locking hardware where the cables come together, would lock together. Uh, the screws have started to strip. It's kind of a hot, hot of different mechanisms to keep the tables together, which really just makes things terrible, honestly. Um, so what we would do is consolidate, uh, the best tables, the ones that aren't, uh, don't have the lamination or the finish cracking. Um, chips and dings, uh, which we did in inventory, there's probably about half the tables that are still in pretty good shape and have. Uh, some life left in them. Um. What we did with that then was, um, we kind of wrote. The, the table replacement into three phases. So the first year, we would replace half of the tables. The second year, half of the remaining tables, which would be five tables, and then the, the third year would be the remaining five tables or whatever would be left. For replacement. A couple bids came back in roughly from seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars for all the tables themselves. Um, so broke down the first. Phase of year one, um, the, the investment in the tables, um, would be approximately forty thousand dollars. Year two, twenty thousand dollars, and then year three would be eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, the other thing that we did too was, um, cocktail tables, currently we have two tables now. We increased two cocktail tables to four cocktail tables. Uh, those seem to get used when the space is rented, uh, and they uh, are due for replacement. They're in pretty rough shape.
How many tables would you get for the forty thousand?
Uh, ten, ten complete tables, so the tables would. Uh, would be split and they would come in half since they pull apart and uh, would nest. Uh, so it would be forty half tables or twenty half tables or ten full round tables.
And then the next year, you would do five tables and the year after that, five tables. And would that take care of all of the tables then, or would that just take care of all of the tables that are not in usable shape?
After year three, uh, all of the tables would be replaced.
Okay.
Yep.
And do we know that this place will stay in business for three years, so we get the same tables? I'd be like, sorry.
You know, that's a valid question, so the, I, I talked to the manufacturer, which is High Five Tables out of Kansas City, Missouri. Uh, I spoke to the manufacturer directly and then uh, also with dealers, uh, Piget and, and uh, Co. Office group, uh, or two that I had talked to that are uh, suppliers uh, here locally that we have to go through. To purchase, uh, we couldn't purchase directly from the manufacturer.
But that manufacturer has been around long enough that we feel confident.
And I, there was one thing that, um, the tables that are priced out here are the same exact tables that are there now. Um, obviously, you can completely change things up and have a different lamination or different coloring or. Um, a variety of, I guess, the finish of the table, but these prices are good for what is, exists, what is existing in the C E C now.
Okay. Thank you.
This might seem like overkill, but a work project that I just had is similar to this. Do we have any plans for like? Like asset tracking on them, so we know which tables we bought, which years that ten years from now, or, or okay?
Be, that way we can keep everything straight, because what happens is that if you get set up, they get torn down, shifted around, moved, so we'd have to either mark them somehow. To be able to delineate which tables were replaced and, and stuff, but that would be something that would have to be done, that would keep track of that.
What happens with the current tables?
Um, then if, I asked both, Ben or both suppliers if they would. Uh, we could sell it back to them to sell as used office equipment. Neither of them. Uh, do that, uh, so we'd be at the mercy of GovDeals auctioning it off as a site or the procedure for good disposal for. For that. Any questions regarding deal? And then I guess, hey, let's do with the, uh, our. Sorry, not tables, but the chairs, the chairs were in pretty good shape. I think there was a lot, maybe twenty that were replaced. Um, from a company called Church Plaza, and those were slated for replacement, um. And I guess from year twenty, I believe for fifty thousand dollars.
And that's twenty chairs, or is that, that would be all of them, or two hundred chairs for fifteen thousand? That seems like a bargain compared to the tables.
Yeah, the tables themselves are fairly expensive.
Exactly.
I think it had quoted per table, per round table was about thirty-two hundred dollars per table. And uh, the Coke office group had it about thirty-six hundred dollars per table, so this, that's also part of the reason why we split it up into three years, so we weren't. Incurring that big of a, uh, financial uh, stress and, because most of the tables are in relatively good shape, so. If, if in year two, we only need to replace two tables or, it's kind of flexible, but um. At least that first year, get everything up to kind of par and matching and complete, and be able to lock. Uh, together. And what I said to you.
I wasn't floored, because I hadn't been in there moving tables around for a while at Windsor Wonderland, and I'm like, the whole thing's moving, why is it not locked? So I was a little, um, disturbed by that, but, um. Is there any value or benefit? Is there any cost benefit buying in, in bulk to get them all at the same time?
Uh, this is their best price.
This, okay.
And, yeah.
Super.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I like that, that's good. Um, on the pub tables, any? Because I think those right now are just a standard, they don't fold out or anything.
Right.
Um, any, so I know you've recommended four, is there, I know that's something like that, even as. Whether we're, I'm doing events or at events, those seem to definitely be more of uh, standards, so do, is there, do you think there's a need for more than four?
I, I would be open to input on it, I guess, if, if you probably would have more experience running events there than I do, so.
I don't really run events there, but, um. Is there requests? Are there requests for more? Anybody who's?
When I've done showings, people do, what, like, they kind of stand out, like, a little, like, nice thing, like, especially of, like, weddings, it's like card tables or like. Right. Little tables to drop stuff off that people like.
Yeah.
People do like them and show interest when I did shows, but I passed that off to Nate, so.
Hey, old deputy city clerk, um, yes, there's definitely, I would say, interest for more, um. I went with four, just because they do tend to get moved around quite a bit and they take a beating for being moved around. Um, they usually end up in the corners, the four corners, and so I thought if we just had one per corner, you'd maybe see less movement. Of the existing ones, take less damage, and you end up with uh, more longevity.
Sure.
I think there is an option to have, like, like the tables would be had caster, like a caster base to it versus it being a solid base. So when it comes to moving them, um, you could unlock the casters and be able to move them, so you wouldn't have to necessarily slide them or drag them. Around the building, um, so that might be an option too. Yeah, so, uh, I don't know. Uh, one company had, um. Submitted a bit or an estimate on just the existing base, which would just be kind of that round heavy base, and the other one had. A caster base to it, so I don't know how customized it was, but I think it's an option.
Okay. The other thing would be, and I don't know, because I know we have, you know, some white folding tables too, but you can, you can get the.
Folding ones like that, I've got those at my studio that are the cocktail.
Yeah, that's what we have too, so I'm just, maybe that's an option too, maybe we do the four standard and then maybe we just pick up some of those taller folding. Ones, if that's something that is being requested or could be utilized, so I know we like, we love ours. Okay, thank you.
Uh, the only other thing I have in uh, the C E C, um, ERP here. Um, is just a large kitchen refresh, and this is just sort of to put on your plate as a placeholder. Um, as the C E C ages, uh, it's usually a good idea to keep things up to date, it's looking nice, looking modern. Um, in my previous life, I worked property management, uh, usually updated our public spaces about every fifteen to twenty years. Uh, updated our models about that time as well, uh, just to keep things looking um, nice and fresh. And uh, the kitchens are probably going to be the number one area that's gonna need it at that time. It could be the bathrooms. Um, we're kind of open to ideas, but this is just to get you thinking down the road. Uh, replacing things, refinishing things, remodeling things, just along that line.
Maybe have that island sink not drained into the floor drains.
I want a hose to connect.
I was gonna say for the hose for the coffee pots that.
Thank you, making that happen.
All right, thanks Nate. Uh, next, we're gonna move over to the C I P, so those are the two folding pages, um, play after the ERP, I think it is there. Gonna talk through specifically fiscal year twenty-five through uh, twenty thirty. Uh, in a little bit of detail, and then if you've got questions on anything beyond that, uh, feel free to, to chime in, but. I'd say through twenty thirty is really where we're, we're a little more fixed on uh, certainty of dates here, so. Uh, after we talk through the C I P, Rochelle will talk through kind of how we're gonna pay for some of these projects on the bonding and debt side. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit about the stormwater proposed increase, just to give you that sense as well, uh, as we go through the rest of the process, so. Uh, just to give you the lay of the land on the Excel sheet here, uh, you know, one of the things that we look at, uh, when. Uh, trying to determine what roads need reconstruction is that, uh, uh, the PCI rating, uh, that the MPO does every several years. Uh, we'll be getting a new one, I believe, this spring, historically, uh, so we're three years old at this point, I believe, uh, historically that. Windsor Heights has not performed well relative to other communities, in part because of our age, uh, but in part because of some deferred maintenance on our streets as well, and so. We've got a real priority in trying to be aggressive on the C I P here and trying to do uh, road reconstructions and overlays as they're needed to try to catch up a little bit. I know there's been a lot of investment in the last couple of years as well, so I would expect uh, our PCI rating overall as a city will look better. Uh, when it comes this spring, uh, but there's still a lot of work to do. Uh, we also looked at whether there's a sidewalk need, uh, when reconstructing the roads. We talked to Des Moines Water Works about whether they're experiencing water main failures. Uh, or there's a need to upsize the water mains, as well as Urbandale, Windsor Heights, Sanitary Sewer District. Uh, and then we've also taken into account, uh, the twenty eighteen stormwater management plan. Um, of which there's a very significant stormwater uh, investment needed throughout the community here as well. Uh, so if you go look over onto the uh, couple of cells that are kind of colored in uh, gray and blue. Uh, that's calling out the funding source for stormwater. What we're trying to get to is to a place where that Stormwater Enterprise Fund pays for all stormwater improvements going forward. That hasn't historically necessarily been the case, and then the same for Des Moines Water Works's capital uh. Investment uh, fund that they have at two dollars per, that we set, but it's at two dollars per thousand of gallons used. Like to get to a point where all new water infrastructure or replacement water infrastructures being paid for out of that capital improvement fund. Uh, the column just before that, anticipated planned construction year, self-explanatory, um, but then below that in parentheses, have just tried to highlight. Any changes from last year's uh, approved C I P. Uh, so the other important column then is really that city GF TIF. Road use tax column, that's telling you how much uh, of this project needs to get paid for out of the debt service levy. Through TIF or through road use tax, local option, sales tax, cash or otherwise. Uh, so I have just in gray here, the top project Seventy Third Street North, uh, the DOT will be letting that project for us here soon. It's part of this year's fiscal budget. Uh, we have a significant amount of STBG funds to help pay for that. Uh, and we've got some funding that we're planning to spend through uh, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and Des Moines Water Works's Enterprise Fund. For those improvements, uh, so really it's just an awareness factor that we have a significant project coming up here as part of this fiscal year. It is in our urban renewal area, so it's a TIF project, uh, our commercial TIF valuation will be paying for. Uh, the debt that we incur as part of this, uh, and the overall project cost uh, is coming in, uh, from an engineer's estimate standpoint at this point. Significantly lower than what you've seen from previous year's C I P, in part because of the ability to use some of those enterprise funds and in part because of. Uh, the good grant work that the city and, and Bolton and Mink has done in the past to help bring that cost down, so we'll know more here soon after the bid is let. Uh, but we're looking to be in good shape on this project as we stand today. And sorry, Rochelle, did you, I, I didn't mean to not involve you in this, because you've been neck deep in this for, for months, but uh. You'll, I'm sure my voice will go worse here and then uh, it'll be all you, so. Uh, the next project is Sixty-Eighth Street South, um. This one, uh, again is on the previous C I P, it has a very low PCI score. There's a need for sidewalk. Uh, when Water Works has identified it as a problematic, uh, from uh, uh, water breakage and sizing of the water main down there. Uh, so we're planning on moving forward with that one in twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, tend to engage with BMI here soon, uh, to start engineering work for that project. And you can see the breakdown of those stormwater and water cost estimates, as well as the approximate three million dollar cost. Uh, to the general fund, uh, to pay for uh, the rest of the project, and the proposed funding source for this would be a twenty-twenty-four bond, so we'd. And the proposed funding source for this would be a twenty twenty four bond. So we'd be potentially bonding, uh, alongside that seventy third street. And Rochelle will talk more about that, uh, afterwards. Seventy fourth street, uh, this is a project that we've accelerated in the C I P. It's the number one project, I think, in Des Moines Water Works list of, of water main breakages. We've got several storm sewer intakes, uh, which is a subject Public Works probably want to talk about here at some point, uh, that are an issue and potentially undermining the road. Uh, and then there's also some, uh, adjacent stormwater issues to this, uh, street as well. Uh, so there's a significant stormwater component to this, uh, we've been proposing to pay for this project, uh, with cash, uh, that's been generated from lost. Uh, road use tax and leftover funds from previous road projects trying to complete this, uh, in twenty twenty six. And Adam's got a nice map as well of, uh, of all these reconstruction projects, just for your reference. Maybe we can pull that up so you can kind of visualize where some of these projects are happening here. Sixty seventh street, uh, again, a very low P C I, uh, rating. Uh, so that'd be school street to university avenue. Uh, we again need to upgrade the water main from a six inch to an eight inch, just like most of the streets, uh, south of university, uh, the ones that we have completed, the ones still need to. This one's proposed in twenty twenty eight. Uh, there's a stormwater component as part of the, uh. As part of the twenty eighteen stormwater study as well, uh, that would be completed as part of this. And again, we'd be trying to complete this with cash at hand, uh, from local option, sales tax, road use tax and other funding sources, uh, generated over the next couple of years. Sixty fourth street. So this is Forest Court to Sunset. Uh, it was previously unscheduled. I think it was looked at as an overlay potentially at one point, but a couple of the ones, uh, that were scheduled as overlays in our C I P, uh, we've looked at. Really not going to get much bang for the buck, uh, by doing an overlay on them based off of the condition of the existing concrete and potential storm sewer issues that are undermining the roads. Um, so this one along with the next project would potentially be our next bond, which wouldn't be until twenty twenty nine. Seventy sixth street and Maryland Drive. So the entire, uh, stretch there. Uh, again, we've got a number of stormwater intakes, uh, that are in very poor condition. You're going to need some patching, uh, even to make it probably to twenty thirty. Uh, but this would be the opportunity to fully replace that system as part of that road reconstruction. Uh, and so that would be part of the twenty twenty nine bond and, uh, project completed in twenty thirty. Uh, beyond that, uh, you see some additional projects that were previously scheduled or have just been, uh, added into our C I P here, taking us, uh, out to twenty thirty four or is unscheduled. Uh, and just want to comment, of course, seventy third street south phase two, uh, is a priority. Uh, we don't have it scheduled because, uh, I think my intent would be to wait until we do receive a significant grant to help us pay for that project. Uh, but that project, much like seventy third street north, uh, would be T I F eligible, so it wouldn't be directly affecting your debt levy. Uh, it could be paid for out of our urban renewal area, uh, or whatever fraction of it, uh, we potentially wouldn't receive a raise grant for. So I'll pause there, see if there's any questions for myself, Rochelle, uh, or our city engineer.
So on the, on the south seventy third, so the raise grant, and we've been making the application. So when I, I think when I was talking to Congressman Nun this weekend, he said that he didn't think that, had, have the decisions for the raise grant been made for this current fiscal year?
Well, that is application to do within the month.
Right.
For the previous one.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, those should have been. Whether they got moved along is the next question.
Okay. Cause he said that he didn't think that, he said that we potentially were still eligible within that. I mean, he, he might've just been talk, but you know, okay, all right.
Get conversation with the administrator, like a.
Perfect.
After it. So I don't think so.
All good. Just.
I know it's been delayed because in another community they went, it was that earmark stuff that they went after.
Yes.
Well, that stuff, I don't know how they're going to do it this year because I don't even know if they've ordered it last year. So. How that's going to come, that'll come out again here shortly.
Right, right.
I don't know if they've fully rewarded.
Okay. All right. Maybe that was part of that conversation too. Okay. Just curious because I. All right. So if we, but if we get raise grant for that, is there going to be a certain timeframe from which we have to, we'll have to utilize those dollars? Okay.
It's the same thing with the M P O, you push out.
A few years. So, okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you. That's good for planning, right?
There's no additional questions. Move on to the overlay section. Uh, and apologize, didn't get the, uh, the project names updated in, uh, the Excel sheet here, but to try to get that updated for you next time to clarify a little bit where these projects are. But twenty five, twenty six, and we're giving ourselves a little bit of cushion on the schedule of these because they kind of will fit in, uh, based off of where project costs come in for the reconstruction projects. Uh, and availability of funding. So they could shift order back one year, kind of depending on, uh, the circumstances of the bu, of the budgeting. Cause they're all cash projects as opposed to any, uh, bonding projects here. But we'd be looking at an overlay of Forest Court from sixty fourth to sixty sixth. Uh, this was a previously scheduled project, so no change to that. Uh, and then in twenty eight, twenty nine, Mott Avenue overlay, uh, sixty fourth to sixty fifth. And then, uh, what's been previously called as a whole series of Plaza Hills overlays here, uh, phase three, so seventy seventh streets, uh, between Maryland Drive and College Drive in twenty nine and thirty. Um, so again, no significant changes to these, uh, but we have removed some of the overlay mill projects and moved them to reconstruction, uh, based off of the road conditions. Uh, and that could continue, uh, just based off of how far out some of these overlays and mills are, they'll need to be evaluated at the time where we're, we're ready to undertake it. Whether the road condition is still acceptable for that. Pavement preservation on the backside of this, um. Andy, I don't, or Jason, I don't know if you have any comments, uh, as to what we're specifically looking at here, but, uh, again, cash projects, um. Largely what we've got scheduled in twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven, uh, were pre-existing, uh, attempts to, uh, hit, uh, very problematic areas. Uh, there at sixty sixth and Colley Avenue, uh, to replace sections as needed, uh, and then do some of this, uh, crack ceiling work specifically on university. Um, going forward, uh, and then there'll of course be additional crack ceiling on residential streets that we don't note in the C I P, uh, just because they're not of a significant, uh, high enough dollar amount. Uh, but that would be more of a focus going forward from Public Works, from what I understand.
I have a new, new toy we ought to.
Adam, could you pop up the, uh, stormwater map for me? Stormwater? Uh, yep, that's a lot. So we've got three standalone stormwater projects, uh, that have been, uh, listed in the C I P for several years and, and the, uh, anticipated construction date starting to, to come forward here, twenty twenty six, uh, for Wilshire Boulevard Storm Sewer. So just for council general awareness, um, that's the purple dots there. And I know it's a little small on the T V there, um, but that whole area of town between seventy third and seventieth. Um, there's generally speaking ten yard or ten foot backyard easements, um, that have fences, uh, that have trees planted atop of them. We're not entirely sure of the condition of those stormwater systems that, uh, are in those backyards, but we know that there are some that have collapsed. Uh, and we were planning on scoping some additional ones here, uh, this, this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Um, we're expanding capacity of our storm sewer system on seventy third as part of this, uh, road reconstruction project. And kind of the next phase of this, uh, for our twenty eighteen stormwater plan is to start working through a number of these connecting storm sewers to replace them, most likely not in the backyards. Uh, but on the actual road right away, uh, since it's difficult to access, uh, and to, to maintain in the backyard. So this would be the first of a series of potential stormwater improvements kind of down the row there of seventy third and seventieth. Uh, I think this is the one that we do have a collapse presently in as well.
On Sunrise Boulevard, um, we have, uh, in the backyard, we have a major sink bowl. This has been an issue for probably, uh, the last seven, ten years in the, in the backyard. I mean, it's a, it's a major issue basically from Willshire. It zigzags back through the yard into Sunset and into the intake. Um, there's only, uh, two, I believe, is just the two intakes on, on Sunset Boulevard. And there's just two on Willshire. So it's making it very difficult to obviously drain down that way. Um, we have had, uh, Urbendale come out and they ran their sewer camera up from Sunrise Boulevard to try to get back up into the guy's, uh, backyard where it was, where the hole was collapsed at. And we only made it about eighty three feet. Um, so it's definitely a major issue. Um. The resident is very kind. I mean, he understands, you know, we were going to try to take some, uh, activity this year, but with winter coming, you know, his resident would didn't want his backyard to be a mud pit, which I understand completely. You know, so we're in constant contact with him, but it, we need to abandon this, uh. This line at some point because I think there's a lot of issues around in these areas where there's, is easements in the backyard. And this is just going to keep on arising and rising. So.
So we've got some additional stormwater projects in twenty seven and, and thirty, and I'd refer you to Justin, uh, if you have specific questions on them. But I, I think it's worth noting that they're all substantial in cost. Uh, we've got a number of road reconstruction projects, uh, that have a significant stormwater. Uh, component to it as well as these standalone projects, uh, and then the four unscheduled ste, stream bank stabilization, uh, projects as well. Which I think these half million dollar price tags are just sort of placeholders right now, since, um, they're a little lower on the priority list. But you can see, I guess, in the C I P that, that there's a lot of stormwater work to be done and it's not cheap. Uh, next section then is flood, uh, reduction and resiliency. We haven't made any changes to this. It still says, uh, possible result of a study that is in the proposal stage. I, I think we've received those results now at this point. We had a little bit of conversation at a previous council, uh, session. Uh, the affordability and the, the impact of those potential, uh, actions, buyouts, levy constructions, um, in particular. Um, probably aren't going to meet the merits for any grants, uh, and that they're going to be difficult to undertake. So looking for a little bit of direction, I guess, from council, uh, as part of this budgeting process of what you want to do or include or disclude from the C I P going forward on the flood. Uh, reduction and resiliency side, uh, we do have another meeting here. I believe it's Wednesday on the C R S program, which, uh, should help residents in the city on the insurability side. Uh, of the equation for folks that are in the flood plain, uh, but the actual protection or buyout, uh, components, uh, there's not, uh, a defined plan, uh, at this point. So.
Are there any, um, or, or what are the current conversations with Clive, um, or anybody else upstream, downstream on? Flood mitigation strategies? I don't.
Uh, I know Dalton was engaged in some of those conversations when he was Public Works Director, trying to see if there was opportunity to create some basins or capacity upstream. Uh, Justin and I had a little bit of conversation with that, that the expense and the opportunity to do that was pretty limited. Um.
I thought Grimes had a project. That was going to, that was further upstream, that was gonna, no? Making stuff up. Cool.
No, you're not making stuff up. They were going to buy, um, what was the campground?
Cutties.
Cutties. And then they abandoned that idea because it was going to have very minimal impact for the. So now Clive has that very large idea about what they're going to do by five one five.
Yep.
Turning that whole area into a wetland, that concept that they're going to potentially pursue.
So, um, just, I had, I did have some conversations or it came up in, in speaking with some, some Clive folks. So I think that, that sounds like it, there might be something brewing in that space. So ideally or hopefully might be for some newer. Revived conversations in this space, I hope. Maybe that can be a follow-up, see where they are.
I know the, the thing that's going around again for the stormwater, right?
Um, Senate File four fifty five. It's on the docket at one o'clock tomorrow.
I've seen a few committees send letters.
Great. I've seen a lot of letters too. What else you want to know about it?
Do we need to send?
I got a text from the committee chairman this morning.
You're up for the public record? We'll do a little follow-up on the flood reduction resilience, see, uh, what Clive's plans are, if there's any opportunity to cooperate there.
Thank you.
Facilities, uh, historically there's been, uh, explored possibility of a, uh, construction of a civic center listed here, kind of integrated that into the space use analysis to see, uh, where that may lead to as far as any improvements to existing space. Relocation, consolidation or expansion. Um, so that's the expense that's, expense that's built out for twenty twenty five is to undertake that space use analysis, which should inform us on any additional capital improvement expenses on the facility's side. Uh, and then we did remove relocation of the public works facility, uh, based off the insurability of the space, uh, and the intended, uh, reinvestments into that space with the salt shed this coming year. Given primarily the lack of alternatives. Added a new section in here for economic development. Uh, it's titled University Avenue redevelopment. Uh, we've had a little bit of conversation on this topic at the Economic Development Committee. Um, I'll tell you, it's, it's more of a action of opportunities, uh, as they might arise. Uh, our comprehensive plan shows mixed use development along corridors of University Avenue. Uh, we have some larger, single-family residential properties on University Avenue as well as some smaller, single-family residential properties on University Avenue. For those to be able to redevelop, uh, according to the comp plan is mixed use, uh, is probably going to take the city as a catalyst to help acquire some of those to try to consolidate them into properties that are large enough. Uh, for a mixed use or a commercial redevelopment opportunity. So the proposal in here is really just as those properties come onto market, uh, take a look at them, potentially do an appraisal and evaluate whether there's an opportunity for the city to acquire that at a reasonable price. Uh, to kind of move forward that vision for mixed use development and density on University Avenue. Go next to parks and trails. Uh, we of course have a very substantial project already underway there at Colby Park. Uh, we've retitled that, uh, just to hopefully alleviate some of the confusion, uh, from phase two to current phase, the park plan. Uh, that's in the current year's, uh, budget, uh, so I won't dive deep into that, but, but I will ask the council for, uh, a little bit of feedback, uh, on, uh, uh, a price that we asked to do the flat work for the food truck plaza. And Adam, did I send you that graphic as well? How beautiful. Um, so we did ask our contractor what it would cost to do the flat work there. So the concrete essentially of the food truck plaza is the area in blue. Um, just since we'll already have a concrete contractor out there this year doing work, uh, and potentially not muddy up that area again with the future phase of the project. Uh, their price came back at two hundred and ten thousand dollars with a ten percent contingency, so two hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus, uh, any additional design engineering fees, uh, for Bolton and Mink to undertake that. That's the best guess estimate. That would not get us the lighting and electrical work, um, for the food truck plaza, just conduit, uh, to make it available for the future. And it wouldn't include any art or those leaf benches that you may have seen in some previous renderings as well. So it would be a partial kind of, uh, completion of an additional project to the current phase, uh, but it would get us out of having a lot of that heavy machinery and concrete work out there again, going forward. Um, funding for, funding source for this, um, you know, that is the question mark. Uh, it's not inexpensive at over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, and we'll tell you, Colby Park is in our urban renewal area, uh, and so that's one thing we're going to look at and explore a little bit more as an update to our urban renewal plan to potentially use T I F dollars to help fund. Uh, some of the improvements that are going on out there. That is one potential funding source for this. Uh, but wanted to share the quote or the price estimate that, is it an actual quote? Yeah. No. Okay. Share the pricing that we've got, uh, from our contractor at this point, just to see if there's any level of interest in us to continue to explore this or, uh, just move forward with phase one, the current phase, um, as it stands.
Um, I'm open to exploring that. I think, uh, the person that helped us get all the food trucks in at the fall festival would also speak in favor of that. Because, um, as a reminder, this will help get the food trucks off the parking area. So we're, we no longer lose a quarter of our parking lot when we have events.
He said it was two hundred thousand?
Two hundred and ten is the, uh, the contractor's, uh, estimate. Then there's a ten percent contingency on there on top of any. Two hundred and ten is the uh the contractor's uh estimate. Then there's a ten percent contingency on there on top of any engineering fees, uh, design and engineering fees that we would experience on that. So I would say probably two hundred and fifty thousand plus would be the best guess at this point.
Pay now or pay later?
Not hearing a lot of feedback. Uh, we'll let you simmer on that one a little bit for our work session.
One other, one other comment that I'd have in um that would not be in support of that is I think that removes the brick pillars that are out there now and part of the bench design, the leaf benches would be to prevent somebody from accidentally or intentionally driving in towards the pavilion area where people are attending an event. And so ripping all of that out and not yet having those leaves in does create a vulnerability to consider when we just whenever we decide.
We certainly don't need the decision tonight, but probably ask for a little more feedback on this at the coming work session, uh, because I think our contractor is going to want some direction from the council if if we are interested in moving forward with that. The next project under parks is trail reconstruction of stations at Colby Park. Uh, we've been working with Bolton and Mink on a tap grant, transportation alternative grant um to replace some of the deteriorated asphalt trail there, twenty-five hundred square uh twenty-five hundred linear feet of that specifically kind of south of the interstate bridge to essentially the Walmart parking lot. Uh, the grant that we've asked for, I think, is a hundred and ten thousand dollars with the city uh paying the other half of that. So this is kind of a project of opportunity for us. If we're successful in that tap grant, uh, we'll have to make those cash uh funds available uh to do that project. Uh, if we're not successful in that grant, uh, this project would remain unscheduled. Uh, but I would just note there are portions of our trail that are starting to show its age, uh, some buckling due to tree roots. Uh, it is, I think, all asphalt. Is that right? The whole, the whole trail system is asphalt. So you're on soft ground there, uh, wet ground uh with trees adjacent to it. Uh, if not now, at some point in the future, we're going to have to start adding trail reconstruction uh into our CIP and and decide whether we wanted that to be a PCC project or or asphalted again going forward. Tennis court park plan, uh, again, that's kind of the the new phase three out here is unscheduled, just kind of holding that out there is is something we'd like to do at the some point in the future. Sherwood Forest Path Connection, we currently have a grass path that kind of acts uh as a corridor uh to that development. We've been speaking with uh Colby interests about some potential additional redevelopment opportunities on that site uh and a desire to kind of get the trail more engaged with that. Uh, so subject to a development agreement and development happening, um, the cities, one piece of the city's contribution to that would be potentially uh paving uh a trail to that area with Colby and the adjoining property owners uh providing the necessary easements for that. Community garden is uh being held over with no specific plans uh in the CIP plan here. Uh, and then uh the food truck uh plaza is still showing as unscheduled uh with the full project cost of about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that would be inclusive of uh some of the lighting and the benches, although I think that pricing probably needs to be updated based off of of the information we got for the flat work. So it's probably in excess of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars now. Uh, looks like mistakenly at the tennis court phase in here twice, uh, but we have a Lions Park refresh and reconfiguration. Uh, Public Works has been working on a little bit of thought process of what we could do for an interim on there. I don't know if you want to provide quick comments on that or we can delay that for next.
You know, I'm, you know, after kind of reading through some of the different things that Adam found at uh City Hall, um, there. You know, they've tried to have uh put, you know, had estimates to put place and our ground equipment up there. I don't think that that's a good idea. Andy and I have even talked about, you know, you could, A, you could put a community garden in there if you want to do that. But Amber has to make sure that the guys clean up her doo-doo. Have a gardener.
That's wrong. We're an email about that.
Obviously, you know, put some thought in, um. You know, maybe doing some sort of like mural uh up there, you know, maybe making like a history wall of Windsor Heights, trying to find some old pictures and you know, kind of write a storybook about the history of Windsor Heights, how it was founded, how it's developed over the years. That's an option that we could do. Um, also, we could even donate and make a plaque up there and and, you know, dedicate it to the Lions Park. That's what it's named after. I know that there's not a Lions Club really left in Windsor Heights because most of those gentlemen are all gone. So you know, some feedback would also be nice to hear from you guys, kind of what you guys kind of see in vision of what you would like up there.
I know one thing that Ms. Farms had brought up during the finance meeting was the collaboration with the technical center about um partnering with them uh to do some of the planning and have their expertise uh when it comes to the vegetation and like material. Um, so I think there's some bands. I don't know what that would look like. We're still trying to connect with each other on that suggestion, but that was one thing that that you had brought up and trying to follow up.
I think whatever goes in there has to be pretty low maintenance since uh.
No, I I and I agree. I think it, yeah, it has not been maintained like it 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 should have been. Absolutely.
I don't think it's been maintained in the fifteen-plus years that I've been here and I can honestly say there has been two times that I know of before the pavilion came down that it was actually rented out and used by people other than the fire department. And I see, I just don't see it being used very often. So, I mean, do we want to put our money into it to really build it up when we have obviously so many other things to look at too?
I I I agree. I mean, I don't know if we can gift it, uh, you know, maybe ask the guy behind uh that owns the complexes up here, maybe even you know, maybe be interested in buying that from the city. I I don't know.
I like the idea of community garden where people can have a plot and take care of it themselves. It would require some setup and then at the end of the season, some cleanup or whatever, but I agree, it needs to be low, low maintenance and.
Definitely do like a like a raised garden. That's what I would put in there, you know, but but a but a raised garden in there.
Well, we've got a lot left covered tonight, so I guess we'll we'll keep parking that one and and simmer in that. But uh last two to touch on then is really just the uh continuation of that trail connection over Walnut Creek South. Uh, there's been a little discussion from some of our neighbors about uh bridges this year, uh, but we have no definitive plans at this point. I think it was originally a result uh of a potential project that that didn't come to fruition for us that placed it in here. And then a water trails access point at Colby Park. Again, we're looking at reapplication of grants uh that would help us get a smaller sort of pedestrian walkway into into the creek there. So a project of opportunity again, if if we would be successful at that grant at some point going forward. Uh, looking at the clock here, I am just gonna really go through the the highlights of the proposed stormwater fee, which uh is immediately after that CIP and then turn it over to Rochelle to to get into the meat of uh of the budget here. Uh, again, just note, there was a twenty-eighteen uh study that looked at all of the stormwater projects here in town that that really needed to get undertaken. UMB also did a study at that point of what it would take to fund stormwater projects. Uh, they set a goal of six hundred thousand dollars a year uh for our stormwater revenue. Um, we're nowhere near that today. Uh, we've got a lot of projects in the CIP. So there's really a strong need to catch up uh on the funding for stormwater projects. And so the proposed fee increase here going from five dollars and fifty cents per ERU to nine dollars per ERU. Um, equivalent residential unit, uh, which is the average amount of impervious surface on a residential property in in Windsor Heights uh would get us to that point of being able to self-fund through that enterprise uh revenue, these uh stormwater projects that we've got listed in the CIP. So you can see there the potential impact to uh property owners, typical home with one ERU would go from sixty-six dollars a year uh to a hundred and eight dollars in twenty-four uh out of that nine dollar fee. And then I have some stair step increases of twenty-five and fifty cents over sequential years in there as well, uh, that would get it to eleven dollars and fifty cents by twenty thirty, which for a single-family home would be a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year. Uh, the impacts are more substantial for commercial property owners uh who have a lot more impervious surface. Uh, so that's uh is something to consider as part of our CIP. Uh, the CIP is what's driving a lot of the city's expenses, uh, stormwater in particular. So if we want to have an aggressive CIP, we need to be able to fund uh the stormwater projects independently through the enterprise funds. And then Rochelle, why don't you talk about the debt levy portion of that?
Um, so in order to um pay for um Seventy-third Street North, we know we already have to um bond for that. Um, we won't actually have to change the levy because we're going to pay for those paper dash portion of it with uh TIF dollars. But something that we would like to look at is sixty-eight street salary. We'd like to look at paying for that. Um, bonding for it and then paying for it out of the debt service levies. And that's levy, um, it's going to cost us for three million dollars, it's going to cost us about sixty-six cents for a thousand. But um as a whole, that will only change our um total debts or our total levy rate to about fifty-five cents, fifty-five cents increase this next year. But what that does, they kind of eases us out, gives us an even um place to stay. And we would stay there through um even the twenty-nine borrowing that needs to happen, um, twenty twenty-nine. Um, and we could stay at that same levy rate um with and um still keep bonding for what we need to bond for. So we're not going to do this up and down, up and down. What are we borrowing for? And if we kept kept it kept it straight, um, and and that would provide us the money that we needed along with cash that we lost and tip um to pay for the majority of the CIP projects. So if you look, um, just um go ahead of this, um, these pages, just a few, and it's actually um uh this it's under the state, but it comes intended to say page thirty, twenty-four, maybe page twenty-five. Um, there are two examples, example A, example B. And this is the new um budget certification. And so example A, so it's the fourth and model thirty-one cents, which would be the total levy rate, which is an increase from the previous year of fifty-five cents of from this year seventy-five cents. Um, this, this is interesting. It does look different because it is different. Obviously, the legislature um changed things up on us. Um, and what this did is it consolidated uh different levy rates. And um so it actually consolidated to be the consolidated general fund levy. The CGFL. So the max rate that um is allowed for us would have been eight point four dollars. Um, but because we had taxable growth over three percent, we had, it was actually taxable growth of three point two two percent. Then we were actually limited to two percent growth, which means our CGFL max rate is eight point three one. So we were um limited in our um, our max rate is eight point three one. Um, so that's unfortunate, but um we are not the only ones and ours is minuscule in comparison to cities around us. So.
What I would just say to that, Rochelle, because I think that's really important that people understand that, you know, in the past, we we just got whatever that increase was and that was added to, you know, our budget. And now we're further limited to the amount of resources that are going to be coming in. So it's, I don't want to call it a budget cut, but it's certainly a reduction in what you you would have otherwise planned for for inflation and all to account for all of those other things. So and everybody, every city is dealing with it. So.
Yeah, agreed. Um.
We're grateful to be small.
So, um, then the next example, obviously, without that um debt service, I highlighted the debt service levy so you could see it. If we did increase the fifty-five cents, the debt levy would go to three point three cents. And if we did not um increase it, add that additional three million dollars, it would stay the same at two point five five. Um, but the next page is kind of a little, is a little interesting. Um, it's the figure of Winter Heights tax levy rate example. What this does show um is that even if you decided to increase um the levy rate by fifty-five cents, there would still be a decrease in tax dollars um to your residents. So um the rate um that it would be decreased um is fourteen point eight, so almost fifteen percent decrease, even with your fifty-five cent increase in your debt service levy. And then if you stayed the same at thirteen point seven six, um, your increase is uh or your decrease, I'm so sorry, is almost nineteen percent. So it, you will have a decrease this year. You will be writing a decrease to your taxpayers, even if you increase your debt service levy.
Rosetta.
The reason the reason that that happened is because of the residential rollback. So residential rollback in twenty-four was fifty-six point four nine percent and in twenty-five, it's forty-six point three four percent. So the amount that your tax of taxable value that you're being taxed on is much less, ten percent less than the previous year. So that's why you're getting a decrease in tax dollars is because of the rollback. And rollback is done at the state level. I know that's kind of confusing. Um, let me um, let me answer some questions maybe.
So Rochelle, oh, go ahead.
What is it next year?
Don't know that until next year.
Well, I think they're estimating that it's not going to go back up to that fifty-six percent that it's historically kind of hung around at um for some time.
Um, debt service levy. So we've kind of had an institutional previously, an institutional cap of not going above seventy-five percent of our.
And we had one eight to eighty.
To eighty when we. Right. So um, we're in this in in and around the seventy-five percent. So with that fifty-five cent increase that takes us, that will, that that will take us to the seventy-six.
Actually, even we're, we would still, even with that new borrowing, even with Seventy-third Street borrowing.
Yeah.
Because we front-loaded um university, um, we actually would be only at forty-eight percent of our borrowing capacity with the Seventy-third Street borrowing and the sixty-eight street bar. We'd only be at forty-eight percent of our capacity.
Okay, thank you for.
The other piece is it's based off of uh assessed value, not taxable value. So.
All right. Okay, okay. That's right. Okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions on that? How does any of you guys, how do you feel about the whole new piece?
I I want to, I want to make sure I understand. So we we borrow and the rate goes up fifty-five cents for a thousand dollars assessed and then the rollback formula, but still the residents, their property taxes are going to go down.
Because they're being assessed to less value.
Okay.
Because of the rollback.
Gotcha.
Dropping it in percent.
Gotcha. Okay.
Just to be clear, that's assuming their assessed value would would have remained the same too. There'll be differences, same people's assessed values both actually.
Gotcha.
Generally, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Um, so the only other big thing um I want to talk about within the schedule, um, because everyone's in the week, I'm not going to go through this page by page. Um, it's on page three is our budget schedule. And what I'm going to give you is this, um, which is the um, this came from um Mike Albers, who was Pope County, he's the headman of Pope County and Ottinger doctors. And this is, this is what a statement that is going to go out. It's called the mailing of the truth in taxation statement. It's how the auditor is going to send this out at some point before March twentieth. And that's why our budget's going to be a little bit off this year. It's a little different. And we have to have our numbers. Um, you have to, we have to make the decisions about our numbers prior to March fourth or on March fourth, so that on March fifth, I can get, give him the information and he can start the mailings of these truth in taxation forms. So I just want everybody to have an example. It's pretty, I mean, it doesn't show much right at this point. But um they are going to have all of the school rates, the school rate, the county rate rate um and the city rate um on this mailing.
To be clear, the Pope County auditor already sent these out, right?
No.
Or the the assessor. I thought he already sent these out.
Nope, it will go out on or before March twentieth.
And what's the one with the with all the numbers on the chart on it? That I'm thinking of.
Um, I don't know that answer.
I'm just making stuff up.
That's a great question. I don't know what that is.
I'm bringing it next time, though.
But um, yeah, this is the new one that is just, they just made up that it's just going to go out. Um. So that's, that's the difference. So that's, that's the difference this year. Uh, we use, we have the max levy rate that we had to, we had to do a um public hearing on and a resolution on last year and the year before, a couple years. And that they've done away with that. And this is what has taken its place. So that's the one there. Um, I'm just going to go through really quickly the highlights of the budget. Um, I'm just going to go to page. Let me just think, I think the summary, we'll just do that a little bit, page seven. Um, we are um proposing an increase of fifty five cents to the total tax levy rate. I'm concerned about that. Um, revenues did increase by two point two three percent. Um, it's less than the three point two percent we would have increased, but take some even some uh loss will show an increase um to one point one four million last year. Um, they said we would have a huge decrease and we only budgeted one point one million and we've already got in one point three million. So that a little bit more than what they thought, just fantastic. We love that. Um, total revenues are estimated at eleven point three million. Um, and bonds are included in that estimate. Um, let's see, expenses um are estimated at seven point seven million. Um, and this is, it is an increase of seven point four one percent.
Rochelle.
Yes.
On page twelve. Revenues, licenses, licenses and permits, seven hundred and seventy one thousand dollars.
Lot of dogs in this.
Oh, I'm sorry, that licenses. I'll have to, I don't have highlighted why I have that number as it is. I'll know that for next time.
Okay.
If you're okay with that. Um, let's see, I think we only have a big one on the um um the information expenses. So general insurance costs. Um, so I have every single bit of insurance that we um carry um is an expected increase of thirty percent across the board. So that's a huge number for us. It's a huge job. Um, so that's why that's part of the big increase. So that's really the main um, the main cost increase to us. Besides our workers' compensation, insurance by thirty five percent, which I honest to goodness, I think thirty five percent is going to be low within what's going on with the city. I think we are actually going to end up with workers' comp to be probably a forty percent. Because if we don't end up with a high risk, so you know, there's something um we're looking at it. Uh, the professional services line within general government is the planning services that the Pope County provides. That was increased by about fifty one thousand dollars um because of all the economic development going on in the city. They do all of our planning services. So if we don't have economic development going on, we don't need their services. But when it is going on, we need them. So that we need to offset that issue. But big ones in there. Um.
I got to say for yourself, Justin, keep it coming.
I mean, general um increases in salaries and benefits because of um human contracts. Um, we will have the motorola communications department will pick up, maybe twenty four, maybe twenty five. We're not sure yet. But we have a grant that is going to offset that. So it's really basically have to, I have to show the expense somewhere. Let's go and offset that by the revenues. Um. I mean, one of the big ones, that's because of hotel and recreation. This is the line I kind of really wanted to talk about, which is page sixteen. Um, contributions and payments um in that on in hotel and recreation. That includes Bravo, Greater Des Moines Partnership, Catch Des Moines, Des Moines Sister City program and uh impact if they ask us for any funds. So that line went up by the sixty two percent primarily because the hotel motel tax um is going to, or is hopefully is going to increase. And um Bravo and Catch Des Moines are a percentage of the hotel motel tax. So when that increases, Bravo and that Des Moines increase as well. But the beauty is that um the Airbnbs around here are paying their taxes. I mean, we we have the one hotel in town that is paying, but it's Airbnb's that are are providing the basis of our hotel motel tax. So that's a good thing. Um, we also did do a little bit of a sal salary allocation change. Um, so city health staff spends time, stormwater, C E C, garbage, um what else do we, public works in general. So the administrator's salary, my salary and Nate's salary have deputy clerk's salary have been allocated to those funds so that we're pulling um from the funds instead of just a hundred percent from the general government, which makes more sense because that's how, that's where we're spending our time. Um, I left special events at forty thousand dollars. Um, if we want to change it, it's something that we can talk about at the next council meeting or next at our work setting. Um, also in here, um it would probably be under uh contributions and payments um is where we would allocate any funds for the foundation. I did not include anything in here. Um, so I will take your lead on what you want me to include if you want me to include anything. We can talk about that at the next council meeting. Uh, community economic development at the amount budgeted, we didn't spend any equity for yet. Um, but proposed is actually increased and that was just the emphasis on the money. So we have more money to say.
Can I just ask um about the Metro Home Program? I know the proposed, like it it jumped up almost twenty thousand.
It did.
But what, what is the reason?
Uh, they want, they want us um utilizing more funds to 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 allow more people to utilize the program. And they asked and it's within the twenty eighty for us to give it to, give it to them. And maybe if we want to, we need to relook at that twenty eighty.
Do we have a lot of people from our Windsor Heights using this program? So I mean, forty thousand dollars, if we don't have many people that utilize it, seems.
It's thirty thousand for the program and eight thousand nine hundred sixty eight for the annual administration fee. So right now on the waiting list is zero people in Windsor Heights.
And I've talked with her and I remember right, the biggest road block is income.
Yes.
So we're priced out of people who qualify for that program, houses here are too expensive or they earn too.
It's mainly that earn too much and then because their application system, it doesn't give, to my opinion, does not give a good profile of why people are being rejected because it's pre-automated. Like if someone applies, they see that their income's too high, done. If they apply, they see that the, because it's also based on property value. So if that's too high, it automatically. So I don't, we don't really have a full picture of like if just people are applying and it's more of the property values, the roadblock being a roadblock for them or it's the income being a roadblock for them.
I would just be curious how many people we have or how many Windsor Heights residents have been helped by this program in, say, the last five years. And if it's beneficial for us and great, but if it's something that maybe there's a different way to to spend the money and help out people, maybe that would be a another way to look at or just kind of look at it differently.
Yeah, can we get, I would just say, get some information. You know, I would even maybe even look at, I don't know when we joined or started doing this program, but look at even the last ten years and say, how much, how many people have benefited from it? How much have we put into the program? What's been the value of that? I don't know. I mean, I don't know any of those things, but.
I was, I was on the committee for two years and I've never once, you took over that committee. I never once went to a meeting. There was never a meeting. It was the easiest committee I've ever been on. So.
It's also, it's also limited to the amount of people that it can help in Windsor Heights too.
Yeah, well, let's get the program details and maybe bring that back for consideration.
The number is more than zero.
Yeah. Okay, so I will get you that.
Thank you.
I've got her contact information, so I'll get that information.
Uh, airport funding that occurred until twenty twenty. It stays static at twelve thousand twenty three dollars. Um, uh, this is something to think about. So page eighteen, general government. Um, travel, training, memberships specifically for council. Um, we um are trying to look at some sort of fair and equitable way to divvy up your dollars on who gets to go where, when and why. And we would love to talk about that at the next um work session. Um, I have allocated twenty thousand dollars for your um meetings slash conferences. Um, that would equal out to about three thousand dollars per member and for per council member and five thousand dollars for the mayor. If you wanted to look at it that way, and maybe it's, that's your allocation to spend. Um, and how you spend it, if you go to D C or you go to the league conference or, but going to all of those things is adding up to to more than what's in the fund. So we have to have some sort of fair and equitable way that everyone gets to do what they want. Um, and I can also, um, Teresa asked for a um two to four year um uh look at how we spent the money and I can pull that for you guys as well. And I can, I'll have that for you before the meeting, so you can look through it. Um, but that way then you guys can look at what what makes sense. I mean, do you want to spend three thousand of your big pot to go to Bravo? Or do you want to spend it to go to D C or how do you want to spend it? It's up to you how you spend it. But um we have to have some sort of maybe better way than what we currently have, which is like a free for all.
Rochelle, Bravo is in the training travel memberships?
Uh, it's in meetings, conference, travel. It's travel and conference expenses, but it was.
Got it.
Yeah. Because you only have, your budget, the mayor council budget is very minimal line. So I don't have it all broken out into a hundred lines. It's all kind of pushed together.
Uh, yeah, so just a couple of things. So um again, I've been here for a few years. Um, in the past, it was, you know, these were, these were the line items and this is what we spent. You know, we made these contributions, whether it was our Greater Des Moines Partnership membership or Bravo or the whatever the those cases may be, right? Um, and then um and that was our engagement within the community. I do get a little nervous for saying, well, here's your budget. You go spend it how you want. Because I don't think, I want, we obviously also need to make sure that we're adequately, that we're taking care of the city's business. Right? I mean, that's our, that's our priority. That's what we're supposed to be doing. That's what those resources are to be there for. And I I personally don't like the idea of, well, I want to go to D C every year, so that's what I'm going to go use my money for, so I can go take a trip. I mean, I'm not suggesting that anybody's doing that, but I'm just saying that that is, I don't like the idea of that. And previously we did rotations, you know, especially for like the D C trip. So um, so that would be, I think that there needs to, my suggestion would be that we need to have a broader conversation on that and but that's my opinion. So for what it's worth.
Or we can always just pay for it ourselves.
You can all, that's exactly right. And I I had shared that in the past, especially for like the D C trip, there was um uh what, there was um an allocation of X number of dollars. It didn't cover the whole costs and then you pay, you pay, you cover the rest of the not to go. So for whatever that's worth, I mean, obviously, anybody can go. You can, you can go do that any day of the week. You can, you know, so it's up to you. But if you're going to go and and be there on behalf of the Windsor Heights community, we have purpose, right? There's, there is reason for us to be involved and um to work with our uh metro partners on these types of things. There's, there's, it's not just to go to be seen. It's a, we have work to do when we go there. Um, and if you're doing the city's business, then yes, I think that that should should be covered. And I think that you have to think about it in that broader context as opposed to, and maybe it's just how it's, you know, it's always about how you message something. I don't like the idea of saying you have, your, your coverage is three thousand dollars. Go pick your, go pick your favorite project. I don't like that, but that's my opinion.
I think we also have to take into consideration when we're looking at things, why are we going to D C? We all went for the seventy third street raise grant so that maybe we do need to push out a little bit more money so that they can see how vested we are. We, we've all come out here, you know.
Brought banners.
And and dilly bars, is that what it is? You know, and challenge coins. But um then other years, you know, maybe none of us go because we aren't looking for for grants. We aren't trying to to have senators see us and hear us. But, you know, I I think also that when we get down to it, we have to be, there has to be a little bit of flexibility so that, I don't know, next year, as many people can go so that we can really flood them again for seventy third street because last year kind of didn't work out for us. But, you know, we tried.
I like that, being strategic and figuring out where to put the dollars. Yeah.
Okay, so a question for next or if we can talk about that answer. Um, the debt service page does show the twenty twenty four A bond includes the three million dollars um for sixty eight street. If we decide not to do that, then I would just change the page. So. Um. And then capital projects, we've already talked about the big ones, um page one and seventy third street. Um, sixty eight street, no place for reconstruction is in progress. And then sidewalk grant program is ongoing. It still has forty thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars in it to be spent. Uh, sixty eight street south, um hopefully we would start that one in FY twenty five with bonding or enterprise ones. One thing to note, if we don't bond for si for sixty eight street south, we're going to have to wait until FY twenty six to start the project because we don't have the full amount of cash in order to do that. So that project would get pushed a year um if we needed to to um if we didn't bond for it. They completely do.
Um, on the, real quick on the sidewalk grant, okay, so it says we, like a thousand dollars was used or so of that.
Five dollars.
Okay, great. I want to really push some sort of um uh education on my own street. I've tripped a couple times. I actually got really hurt one day, so um not walking my dog. Um, but anyways, um now is probably a good time. Maybe Adam, we could do a March or an April. Um, whoever's doing the newsletter, you're doing the newsletter, right? Okay, um, do it like a, you know, spring planning. Get your spring planning on seventy ninth street. Yeah, 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 yeah. Hey, a shout out to our friends on seventy ninth street. Um, and then one other quick question. Um, um Rochelle, on the local option sales tax, you talked about it going up. I'm looking for my page marked now and I can't find it. Yeah, so I saw on your um the previous, maybe the trend, we we looked at that. So we look at local option sales tax. So in twenty two, we were at one point five.
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve.
Thank you.
Um. And then we went, we went down and then we're, we're back on the, wait, do we know what the, what the, why that trended that way during that year?
Yeah, that's when they reallocated or they made the decision just to, um, how they allocated was different. They changed it.
Okay.
That year.
Okay.
Ended up with less and um and then they came back the following year and said, we messed up the previous.
That's right. Okay.
And now here's a big bucket of more money for you.
Perfect.
That's why it looks so wonky.
Great. But I'm assuming that some of our other things, so we're, we've seen an increase in that, obviously, the Aldi's, I'm going to guess, and some of the other additional.
It 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 might help us, but it might not because they might not be shopping at Walmart and they're shopping at Aldi instead. So sales tax would be.
Well, but we, just the sheer fact that we have more business entities, it provides a bigger base.
You would hope.
Ideally.
That all is Pope County in general. It all goes in the bucket and we just get our percentage.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah.
It's too bad. We don't get everything that's in our.
That's right. Okay. I forgot about that. Okay. I like their formula.
Um, real quick question on the sidewalks. I don't know how far back uh records go, Adam, for um like code violation. I remember about four neighbors ago, four owners ago of my next door neighbor. He said that at one point he got a letter from the city about his sidewalks being in rough shape and he claims he told the city, I can't afford to fix them, so I don't know what to tell you. And he said then they got off his back and um and that property's only changed hands about four or five times since then. So I don't know if we have records going back that far.
We would have the records, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, and that's Florence Street, you guys have surveyed already, like.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
You've notified people and.
Well, we haven't notified him yet, but it is coming here is the year that uh that. Well, we haven't notified him yet, but it this coming year is the year that uh the sidewalk program or that important program can start.
Gotcha.
We've already done inspection, we'll go back out through the spring, re-survey everything, and then at that point, if there's um code violations or the sidewalk is in disrepair.
Yeah.
Then we can notify, and then we can also provide letters regarding the sidewalk rehabilitation program or sidewalk grant program.
Sure.
For them to see.
Don't forget about your friends on Seventy-ninth Street.
And council will see a uh draft sidewalk ordinance here in the next couple of months, because our current ordinance isn't gonna work with what the plans are as far as phased reconstruction requirements of of sidewalks, so there's some decisions that need to be made on who you want to have uh pay for some of those required improvements uh and how to structure kind of the organization of those quadrants and in making those required improvements, so before we get the letters out, we wanna get some clarity from you and and move forward with the ordinance change, so that we're in step with uh kind of what I understand the plan has been to be, to to go through and make sure those sidewalks are being repaired.
Okay, I think that's all I have really for this. Um the next thing on the schedule then, for the nineteenth is um we will do a work question to review and off in depth if you so choose. But prior to that, um if you want an individual meeting to discuss details, um please let me know as soon as possible. And we get that set up. Um and then personnel and finance committee will actually review the proposed budget on, I think it's the sixteenth, on Friday to sixteen. Um and then the next thing that we will do is set a public hearing. Um and then you'll do uh capital improvements plan public hearing, you'll do um a resolution to approve that. And then you do have to approve a proposed tax levy rate at the March fourth meeting. Here's the caveat, uh the Department of Management doesn't have any sort of revolution, resolution. No one is giving us any sort of indication that there will be a resolution, so we don't know exactly what that's gonna look like. But hopefully by then they'll make some decisions. If not, we just have to, I don't know, approve by motion maybe that you, that's what you want me to put on the form that needs to be sent out. It's kind of a wonky um wonky year.
They're all just winging it up there, huh?
We're just gonna follow the trend of what all the other charities are doing.
That's what, my assumption is everyone else is trying to figure out what everybody else is doing, so we have to figure it out before then, but that is all. I haven't let you guys have any questions for me.
That's lots to take in.
Any questions?
I will say it's been excellent to work with Adam this year, because I'm not doing this by myself. We have someone that cares and wants to like be involved, so it's been fantastic.
The feeling's mutual, Rochelle.
This was fantastic, uh both laid out and having everybody present on each of the sections, so thank you.
All right, uh reports, mine is contained within the packet, Ms. Harms.
Um I would, I would start off and just echo what Lauren just said, though. So this is in my, starting my ninth year. This is the best budget presentation we've ever had in this city, so congratulations to you all, so. Um uh and thank you, um this is, it's very helpful, and I think this is something we've been asking for and and um so it's nice to get there and get the right team working together, so good job. Um lots of stuff going on, uh Max coming up next week. We, I've been managing the nominations committee. I think we knocked that out today, so that's been really good. Um also been working on all the race grant letters. Um we got the nun one today, yay. I costed him a Bravo, by the way. Um and then have uh uh put out additional requests for the Y West Des Moines, and then um I'm gonna continue to see if I can get the railroad folks to respond. Um uh Bravo was fun on Saturday night. It was great to connect, uh more than fun. It was great to connect with, you know, all of the um regional, regional folks and and others. Um Congressman Nun was there, obviously, got a letter out of that interaction uh from from that, so that was good. Um and just real quickly, there's not a lot um going on um at at the legislature, they pertain to city issues, a few. There's not gonna be, I don't think, a tax bill this year that has to do. Um I think it's only gonna be on income taxes, um so I don't think that there's much to, hopefully they can like let things settle um here on the property tax side of the equation anyway. Um never say never, and knock on wood, but um regardless, um uh the stormwater bill Justin brought up, so that's um potentially something that um that will will play if it does continue to go through. Um otherwise, I think that's it for the moment. If anybody wants Girl Scout cookies, let me know.
No updates for me.
Your living?
Thank you. Uh tomorrow morning at seven thirty, we get to do the Icon Watershares Board, which I've been um appointed to, and I'm looking forward to that. I had a great meeting with Stephanie uh Stephanie um the other day, and we did an interview with her. Was uh pretty fascinating what they're planning for economic development for that uh project. Also, I had a chance to interact with Congressman Nun uh Saturday evening at uh Bravo. We had a substantive conversation about small business opportunities in uh the third district. Uh he was quite amiable to some suggestions, and that that was really great. That would, oh, one other partly personal thing, um as you perhaps saw uh my friend and a friend of Iowa died suddenly today. Um Bill Northe, the former Secretary of Agriculture at sixty-four years of age. Uh that was quite a shock. He's, we may have been uh different with regard to some political leanings, but he was always, always a kind and resourceful and a good friend, and I'm sure that Carol and the rest of the family are are viciously grieving right now. That's the end of my report, sir.
Ms. Jones?
Um we had Dart a couple weeks ago, uh and have started talking through what will be the challenges. Uh we have a new set of people around the table, so some cities uh replace some of their commissioners. Uh we have a new executive committee, which I'm now a part of. Um and we will now start the the tough conversations about what it looks like to deliver transit services. Uh we'll have a, the city manager commissioner budget conversation on the twenty-third. Um and then go from there.
Uh Joseph, when does Des Moines talk about the franchise fee?
Question mark. We don't know.
Okay, we don't know.
It's about to be in February.
Yes, but.
No, no, alright, you know. Alright.
Um we are busy planning uh the starts of all of our events. Uh Lauren and I will uh start meeting here to continue on the planning for the Fall Festival. We've already kind of nailed down a few things, but um it's now time to get into full Fall Fest mode, which I don't know if I'm sad.
Feel the fall in the air right now.
Uh I'm still looking for volunteers for Earth Day event, as well as the stream cleanup with Public Works. Uh our Earth Day event is April twentieth, and the event will run from twelve PM to three PM inside the Community Event Center. Uh we already have a few few confirmed groups that will be attending, including SOAR. Uh I am looking for a food co-op or someone that can provide attendees with samples of fruits and vegetables. Um the group, the city, or the company that was here last year is no longer able to do it. So looking, if you have any leads or anything, let me know. Uh Special Events Committee met on January nineteenth, and we will be meeting the sixteenth of February here to discuss uh the foundation's request for donation, as well as the food, food truck fees. And then um I attended the Metro Waste Authority Legislative Event uh at Metro Waste. It was a full room and a total success. Uh thank you to the mayor for attending. And Teresa did a great job planning the event. The food was amazing. Uh I attended the Des Moines Partnerships Annual Dinner with Alex Smith as the guest speaker. Um I think Adam AJ owes us all ice cream. Uh you know, like the fire department's tradition, if you get caught on on video or, you know, any type of media, you owe ice cream to everybody. I counted three times that you were up there, your face was up there, you actually talked, and then you had your face up there, and then another round, you had your face up there, so three times.
That's true, right?
And and you know, three different ice cream.
I I think so.
Be apologetic.
So just, just throwing that out there, you know, and keeping up with tradition.
Up before or after council meeting.
Uh I attended the Bravo, and like everybody else, it was a nice event to attend. Um got to meet a lot of people or see a lot of people that I probably wouldn't have recognized um because everybody's looking so nice. I don't look like I'm one step away from homelessness, so. Let's see, a few chamber events that we attended, um have the Metro East Exec Board tomorrow. Um reminder about the book adventure uh that Windsor School is putting on. They're still looking for volunteers to read on March fourth, and they're also still taking donations, so if you'd like any more information, let me know. If you haven't voted already for the movies that we're gonna be showing this year, please do go and make this soon. I think it's gonna be up until Friday. And there were already some that I was amazed with, um that were in the the running, others.
Changed up.
Oh. Can't wait to see what it's gone to now. Um oh, so I'll send you a link, because you don't do social media.
Then I can know about it.
Um and that's it.
AJ, anything from your staff?
We wanna touch on the dog park equipment real quickly?
Uh yes, I made a boo-boo. Sorry. With the dog park, obviously, we got the new fence uh put up. Late uh summer, late fall, right in there. Um so we had some money, we had allocated eighty-five thousand for dog parks. And we come way under budget. Um and we wanted to, uh Rochelle was kind enough and set some money aside for that ten thousand dollars for some upgrade for some dog uh park equipment. You know, new toys for the dogs to to use, because the ones down there now are pretty ratty. Um so we're looking at about ninety-three hundred, ninety-one hundred dollars and some change.
And I think there was some council conversation. I think we're just looking to confirm that you wanna move forward with replacing the equipment with the estimated price, and if so, then we'll have that invoice on the next city council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just time to change. I mean, if we're gonna have the new lockdown. The whole equipment was pretty kind of culled together that um Brian had fabricated in the shop. So it was not in the best condition. Use an upgrade, so we have some agility, but uh in the amount of ninety-three hundred, ninety-one hundred dollars.
Mr. Mayor. One, just real brief thing, I forgot. I wanna thank Tiffany, uh prior to me going to Orlando on assignment. Uh we squeezed in the uh TRC uh training, so thank you very much for making it happen.
Okay, item eight, closed session. Uh closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty seventeen, sub three, negotiating sessions. Strategy meetings of public employers, mediation, and the deliberative process of arbitrators shall be exempt from the provisions of Chapter twenty-one. Motion to go into closed session.
Jason, can I give you this? So that's that URL for that uh. Yeah, thirty-six thousand.
It's up to you. Really just need to raise green.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Sent her an email today.
Um public forum was at the beginning of the meeting. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh what, what is it you need, or what did you wanted to speak on?
Uh I live on Seventy-third Street.
Okay.
A lot of uh talk about that tonight, okay.
When I hear from her, cause I'm assuming you'll get an email back, Eric got an email back from West Des Moines.
And I unraveled this this afternoon. But anyway.
Alright, thank you.
This is the first time, again, on Seventy-third Street, fourteen hundred block. Corner of Forest Court, Seventy-third.
Did you want me to keep those, or?
If you want them, you can have them. This happened uh March of uh.
You can go to the dais. Give, give, please give Adam your, your, your we're, we're kind of out of procedure here. I'll, I'll, I'll let you speak, because you waited the entire meeting. Please, go ahead.
A budget meeting, no.
Yes, a budget, you sat through a budget meeting, go ahead.
So state your name.
State your name and address, please.
Uh Ken Wolf, W O L F, Mountain Wolf, as was mentioned earlier, fourteen oh one Seventy-third Street. Um in regards to the curbs, which I know you all know the story, it's not, it's nothing new. But um a year ago, um my blower took in one of these.
Oh, boy.
And uh it didn't, it didn't kill it, but it maimed it a little bit to the tune of uh two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. As well as uh today, if if Des Moines registered, they're all talking about the uh about the potholes, but uh uh for the Public Works guys and whatever. Um this is, the curbs are uh got hit pretty good from the plows the last two storms, and that's where I picked up the souvenirs. Uh but anyway, that's it. Thank you much.
Well, Mr. Wolf, you you understand, and and you know that Seventy-third is going to full reconstruction this year?
Um yes, I do understand.
Okay, and so I, I, I'm sorry it has taken this long, and that, you know, you apparently have suffered personal setback because of that. Um but it is going to bid next month. Uh and finally, the process will begin, and the road will undergo reconstruction.
Well, the situation is, I I understand on a temporary basis now, but it's just the point that um I've got an eight-horse thirty-inch blower, and um I can't do what I wanna do to my driveway. In fact, let me point this out, uh when this was repaired last year. Um the guys in the shop at, now this was at uh AE Outdoor in Urbandale. They said this, the customer have a gravel driveway. You can read it if you want. Uh we can set the shoes to raise housing further up in the air to prevent rocks from getting to the impeller. A year ago, this month. Uh so nothing's new, but it's, it's getting worse as evident by the uh by the currents. Thank you.
Thank you.